Let's call this meeting to order. I guess first of all, we can all have a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, with liberty and justice for all.
And we got through, President got through those two. I have room for more.
Counselor Menzel?
Present.
Counselor Shumpf?
Present.
Counselor Trump?
Present.
Counselor Henderson?
Present.
Okay, do we have approval on the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Right, approved by Joe, seconded by Brian. Being as the sheriff isn't here, well, we'll skip right down to Mayor's report. Means he's not here.
You have to call for yea or nays.
We do.
For the...
Approval.
Approval.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Do I hear more than yea or nay for the approval? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moving, that's done. Mayor's report means he's not here. Councilman report?
I have nothing this month.
I have nothing.
Okay, so now, nothing to report there, okay. Citizens' comments? Means there's no citizens here. Our son. Your wreck. Okay. Red reports. Do you...
Is that you?
Did you think it was one of your calendar?
Yeah, I think it might be one of the... The USA thing, go to YouTube channel.
Oh, from the American flag? Oh, glad you won't be able to get rid of that. There, we've moved on to the next video, obviously. Okay?
Steve, do you have any other comments?
Uh...
So who does the service on trucks?
We used to.
Yeah.
Oh. Well, yeah, they, we, I had...
Craig helped us.
Yeah, Craig used to help us and we decided to move in another direction. So my intent is to use Dave Reed. He's got the facilities to take the used oil and all that stuff and just do one at a time and work it through and do the service and that way, you guys used to kind of do everything all at once.
It is all one night.
All one night. Yeah, but...
So that part now, oil changes, antifreeze, that sort of stuff?
Yeah, just checking all fluids and et cetera. And I talked with Dave about it and he was absolutely 100% willing to do it, so... And he's got the ability to take the used oil after it's drained and he's got the, he's got oil on hand to put back in them, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, that's my intention at this point and I'll help him when he does them.
Is he gonna contact you then?
Yeah, no, I'll get ahold of Dave. I'll say, "When do you want to do the first one? We'll pull the first one in, get it done, and then we'll do it." And I'll let Steve know that we're taking number such and such in to do maintenance today and I'll let you know when it's back in service.
Sounds like a plan has been established.
Yeah, but...
Do we have a cost?
We won't have a cost until he's done, but it'll probably be a couple hundred dollars a truck, I'm assuming.
Sure.
You know, by the time you buy oil and filters and if it's been that long, I didn't think it had been that long, but it maybe has, we'll, you know, replace every filter on all the trucks and make sure that it's all completely gone through, so, no problem. No problem.
Three, four hundred dollars too, I don't know.
Yeah, it could be, it easily could be.
At work, it's, well, change is four, five hundred bucks, and I do it myself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, when I was doing change in semi-tractors, it would be anywhere from 250 to 300. These are smaller engines, but yet take about the same amount of oil and filters and et cetera, so, yep.
Any other comments or questions here, Steve?
Yeah. We'll check.
We'll check.
Yeah.
If not, well, I will proceed on to the next one, public works.
Um, the only thing I would like to add, which kind of goes hand in hand with introducing our new part-time employee, is we talked a little bit about...
I was wondering who you were.
Yeah. We'll get to that.
I'm just here for the heck of it, you know?
That's in, that's down here, that's down here in the agenda a little later.
Started with your serving beard.
Yes, this is correct.
Every year.
I, we talked a little bit about, at budget time, I suggested maybe purchasing a Gator or something to have a second vehicle for us to use when, you know, this is even before Brett, but having a second vehicle available when we're going separate directions to work on things and with Brett starting, it's becoming more evident, we need to do something. And I totally get the council's decision that a Gator would probably be not a wise choice because of ordinance, golf cart versus Gator versus whatever. Just wanted to start the conversation about possibly a small pickup, either half-ton or a so-called mini or medium size, possibly something that could be more economical when we take water samples to Waterloo, something that could be driven to conferences by Danielle and myself, et cetera, instead of paying mileage on our personal vehicles. But that way, when we're going separate directions, working on objects, so it's really not anything for decision, it's just to throw out there. And we obviously didn't get it in the budget, but is there, is that something we should maybe be doing to, or thinking about? And if so, what's, what kind of dollars are we talking about spending? You know, $10,000 doesn't buy a hell of a lot of equipment anymore, you know? We all are aware of that, but then again, it won't be a heavily used vehicle either, so we wouldn't, definitely would not have to buy new. The other option is probably a little less desirable because you don't really have the good winter, drivability is a golf cart, because we are, our ordinance does say a golf cart is allowable in town, but it would be helpful, you can buy golf carts that have a little utility box on the back instead of a rack for golf clubs and that route would be acceptable too, even in the short term, and you're probably looking at more of a $3,000 purchase to get a decent cart, so, don't want any decision, don't want any, you just want to throw it out there, get people started to thinking about it. Maybe next month, we'll put it on the agenda and I can throw a few prices together for a few things, so...
My only issue with the golf cart is just because, well, I have one. You can't drive down Main, you can't drive down Roosevelt, you can't drive down...
Yeah.
Now, here's something I was thinking of as you were saying this, was like GovDeals. And I thought right away of the old Marion police cars, but the car probably wouldn't really do it for you.
Yeah, it'd be nice if it was some sort of pickup, just so that you could throw something in that bed, you know? And I even thought about a small SUV and that would be okay, but still, you're not gonna drop the sewer pump in, you know? Put an 800-pound sewer pump in the back of a mini pickup, fine, trying to wedge that in the back of a car, not so good. Yes, we always have the three-quarter ton pickup we could take and it's not a problem, but if that's gone on a trip to buy, to get a pump, then there's nothing left in town to drive except a dump truck, which it really stinks starting up that diesel 550 and driving it a block and shutting it off and et cetera, you know? It's not a neat item, just want to throw it out there for discussion, so... And other than that, I think the report is self-explanatory. Just got a lot of projects headed our way, some that have been put off and new things that have popped up and any questions on any of that stuff? And I will talk a little bit more about Brett and et cetera when we get to that a little bit further down the agenda.
Anything else? Okay, clerk's report?
Um, I don't really have anything to add, just wanted to remind everybody of the special hearing for the budget amendments that'll be on the 28th at 6:30. So if you're able to make it, that would be excellent.
The only comment I have, would you please send out a reminder to everyone?
Yes, I would be so.
It's the 28th?
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was the 16th, why did I think that?
It was originally and then we had to change it.
Okay, the date is, baby's coming whether you want it or not, that, just so you know.
Okay. So you didn't want to ask her one more day?
No.
I threw it up.
Second.
I don't have anything else.
Nothing else, do we have...
Do you have another question? Do we have any hearing dates set up for these new since maintenance?
We don't, we need to set some and I have to have that later on the agenda under old business to discuss all the new since maintenance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, oh, I'm sorry, I do have one bill to add to and you have a copy of it, it's the...
The John Deere bill?
Yeah, the fix of the tractor.
Yeah, D and D Auto for $225 to repair the tractor.
If any of you didn't hear, I was pushing up the brush pile and poked a big log, front tire hit a big log and pumped, poked into the hood and broke a chunk of fiberglass out, so that's what we had to fix.
I move we accept the consent agenda with the addition of a $225 bill from D and D Auto sales.
Second.
Now, the way I'm first and second, do I get a here or a right?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, your business.
Please look back.
Okay.
Oh, um...
I forgot two invoices that are in the packet. I think I need to read them for the record, sorry. So can you redo your...
Are they in the consent agenda or not?
No, they, they're in the packet, but they're not listed.
Oh, they need to...
Yes, sorry. Um, there's an invoice from Keystone for $146 and then there's the SRF revolving loan payment that will be automatically coming out of our account and that is for our principal payment of $43,000 in the interest of $9,240 and the service fee of $1,540 for a total of $53,780. And those are to be included in the bill's add to, sorry.
So I can remember, how do we do that? Do we amend the motion?
Well, we just have another motion to accept these.
A separate motion to accept these added to bills, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the two invoices as presented by Steve, Keystone and the hand.
SRF.
SRF.
Is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Resolution 05-2019-01 is to set a public hearing for the 2019 budget amendments.
This is to amend the resolution that was passed at the last council meeting for the 16th that we had to change to the 29th.
And that was to publishing deadlines in our once-a-week newspaper, just so you don't...
The budget hearing will be May 28th at 6:30.
Receiving the motion.
It's time receiving motion.
I move we accept Resolution 05-2019-01 to set the public hearing for the 2019 budget amendments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now... We're gonna discuss the FY19 budget amendments, you all have the copy?
Yeah, there's a copy of the notice and this is what was submitted, or will be submitted in the Lind newsletter and that will be discussed at the public hearing. Basically, we just took the FY19 budget that was approved and published and looked at where we're at with current expenses and revenues and then I did a calculation on the percentage of the year that's expired to try to annualize the costs and put in some amendment numbers, it's obviously just a guess, like a estimate for all of these, but I'll go through the amendment column. So in the, the current amendment column, the first section is for the revenues. The first number, that $1,003 is for licenses and permits. That is an increase in the revenue for building permits. We received more revenues to date than we had initially anticipated. The next line item is for the use of money and property, that is $14,119 and that's essentially all of that is actually the bank interest that we hadn't accounted for initially on the budget that we submitted. The account balance averages, the interest that we earn is about $1,800 a month, so that interest was clearly understated initially. The next item is the intergovernmental and it's $34,722 and that is an adjustment to the township contributions for the fire that we received. It was, we had initially anticipated getting around $15,000 and we were getting, were getting around nine, so I had to decrease the revenues for that and then I put in the funds that we'll be receiving from the FEMA grant to offset the cost of the cascade system for the fire department. So the net total is an increase of $34,722. The next item is the miscellaneous for $1,000. I think in the miscellaneous revenues, we had had some health insurance repayments from an employee that was paying back for health insurance for family members and that was changed to be payroll deducted, so that caused a decrease in the miscellaneous revenue and then we received a check to offset the expense when we had a well three pump go out, so we put that into the miscellaneous revenue, so it nets to about a $1,000 increase. And then the other financing source was the $23,000 that we received when we sold the skid loader and that offsets the increase of expense that we had when we bought the new skid loader. So, sorry, that was long-winded, but we will go down to the expenditures. Unless anybody has any questions on that first section?
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, do you want me to keep going level one?
Please. Please, I think everybody needs to know.
Yeah, sure. Um, so the expenditures in the second section, the first amendment line is for the public works portion. And that is the $21,948 and we had street repairs that were unanticipated. I think we had some of this cement for the... Sorry, I didn't write that one down. Blink, Dan Sherman.
Oh, yeah, we had several areas of concrete that were broke up at the First and, First Street and Second Avenue, front of the fire station where we fixed that and there was just...
And the cracked ceiling. And I think this is also where we put the purchase of the new skid loader, so all of those expenses combined caused an increase to the anticipated public works total expense. The culture and recreation balance, or amendment of $11,675 is for the library contract. We hadn't budgeted for the correct contract total because it had increased and then there was also a payment timing issue. We paid an FY payment in the first month of FY19, so it caused an increase to FY19 expense.
So we, so we paid FY18 in 19, I...
Correct.
That makes it clear if you said anything.
Correct. Um, the next is the $16,286 general government and that has to do with city hall updates that we did, that was around $11,286. And then we had an unanticipated expense of legal fees. And I added a little more for other anticipated legal fees that we'll have, so I put $5,000 in for that, so it was $16,286. And then the next is a capital project and that is for the fire station project and I put in the engineering and architectural fees since we did sign the contract with MSA and MGA, so that was about $70,000 for both of those contracts combined. And then we had legal fees to purchase the land and that was about $8,200. We had, the land purchase was $65,000 and then there is another $40,000 for the purchase of the cascade system for the fire department, but that is offset by that $40,000 in FEMA grant funding that we'll be receiving. And then finally, the $12,020 for the business type enterprises, that's the water and sewer. And we had unanticipated expenses for the well three, when we had to repair well three and then we had some SCADA upgrades.
Upgrades to the water control system, yeah.
And then the float system, transducer went out and the float system was...
Transition went out and added floats to the lift station, main lift station.
Wasn't there a pump involved there too?
Yeah, yeah, we had to have one rebuilt, so, which we have back by, so, yeah. Rebuilt pump, fixed the transducer that failed and then added the float system, so...
I thought we decided to buy a new one.
I thought we bought a new one.
Oh, yeah, it was new, it was new, yes, we bought a new one. Yes, you're right.
Organized and everything.
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right. And so that new one is sitting in the shop ready if we ever need it, yes.
So what we had budgeted and then those unforeseen expenses, I estimated in that increase to the expenses of $12,020. And then finally, in the, if you go all the way down, the beginning fund balance, we had initially listed that we had anticipated the beginning fund balance of 1.4 million, but we had actually started the year with 1.6, so I put in the $185,000 to adjust that, so that's what that is in there for. And then the bottom line combines it all and totals it, so hopefully that makes sense. That was really long-winded, thanks for paying attention.
It was information people needed to know.
And then on the very bottom, there's a section there for an explanation and I try to get all of that in there with parameters of how many words you can type in. Does anybody have any questions?
I can see, is there any questions? This way, when we come to this meeting to approve the budget, there won't be should be a quick wham-bam-thank-you-nam situation because we went through all of the changes.
And if there's any other questions at any time, obviously, just let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Now, we can't vote on this or nothing, so we'll just...
No, yeah, just discuss it and let your guys know.
We can go on to the next item.
Is that, can you pull up your franchise?
Franchise fee?
I went to the IMF conference in Des Moines and when I was there, there was a representative from Alliant and he works with cities to facilitate a franchise fee that cities are allowed to put on the Alliant energy bills. So he said that since we don't currently... Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
It's not in there.
Yeah, it was in the, was on online.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't print it out, but I think...
I just went past it.
A little of the permit?
It's in color.
It's a separate folder, it's on the...
Oh, that's right. Oh, my God. No, it's this one. No, it's, I had it up, I swear I did. No, it must be in my email yet, hold on.
I don't have got a copy that I run, you wanna run?
It's okay, he's good.
Yeah, I got it, coming.
So essentially, cities can add this franchise fee up to 5% onto Alliant energy bills and Alvernet currently does not do that, we have the capability to do that and...
Which one?
They're all, they're all information about it, so just think of the first one. You can't do a franchise fee and local option sales tax, so it would be one or the other. If we chose to do this right now with the local option sales tax is assessed on all the Alliant bills, that 1% goes to the county and then the county takes that and puts it in the local option sales tax bucket, which then gets allocated out to all the cities that have the local option sales tax. And Alvernet, I think it's 0.26% is because of our population and what we receive of that total funding. So of the, of roughly $9,000 that's collected on the Alliant energy bills currently, for local option sales tax, Alvernet sees about $24 a year of that money. So if we decide to do this franchise fee and just for number state to say, we decided to do 1%, it would, that 1% local option sales tax would go away and a 1% franchise fee would be added on to the Alliant bills for customers, so their bill would have no net change. However, it would allow those funds all to come back to us, so we would be getting $9,000 instead of $24 a year. So it'd just be a way for us to retain that funding that's being assessed on those bills and be able to retain it for the city usage.
Where do, where do those funds go? They go in our general fund? Do they have to go a certain...
Just the way she handed out.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at it.
That's fine.
It's okay, it wasn't a hack, we just, Joe and I were discussing this before the meeting, so I printed this off. It discusses what those funds can be used for.
Public works, basically.
It, it's pretty broad what we can use it for, but yeah.
Didn't we decide to use it for tax, to lower taxes and public improvements?
You're talking a different loss than what we receive as lost payments throughout the county, this is just from...
Just from the Alliant, just what Alliant collects.
Right.
Does it change loss in general?
No.
Changes just on the Alliant?
Well, it would decrease loss. For us, by $24 essentially.
That's what I'm saying though, but it doesn't decrease, it doesn't take away lost funding for any other, it just is the, what comes on the Alliant bills, right?
However, a bunch of other cities are and have started implementing this and so they are now contributing a lot less to the lost fund because when they do that, then their funds are not then going to the lost fund.
The pottricks.
Right.
So our $24 might be $18 or something.
Correct, yep. And the caveat here is that right now with the local option sales tax, the school is tax exempt, so they do not pay the lost. And if we decided to go ahead and implement this franchise fee, the only people exempt from the franchise fee are the city, the cities that choose to do this, so the school would then be assessed this 1% fee. I called Harley at, was that Harley at the school? I called Harley at, was that Harley at the school? And the school's average Alliant bill is about fifteen thousand five hundred a month. So it would, over the course of the year, increase their total expense about nineteen hundred dollars. It was nineteen sixty per year. And I asked if there was a way, if we decided to, if we could exempt them from that. And there's not, it's not an option. So just something to think about and consider.
We're gaining here, we're moving here.
Right. So it would be a, you know, a detriment to the school of two thousand dollars, but a benefit to the city of nine thousand. So it's just something to think about.
And you could ratchet it up. I mean, if you wanted to put, and I don't know how many cities are. Did you get that calculation?
If there's another.
Yeah, some of them. You can go one, two, three, four, up to five percent franchise fee. But that's, then you start boosting up everybody's Alliant bill and, and Alliant just like a rate increase.
I think we should, I think that would have really bad public relations.
Cause if you really think about this, and I'm just gonna average the number to two thousand. That's twenty-four thousand dollars onto the school and we're only gaining nine. We're, we're actually going backwards. In theory, we're, we're not as the city, but as the citizens, you're going backwards.
Say that again for me, Brett.
So if the school right now is paying two grand a month, that's gonna go up.
No, no.
Oh, it's a year.
It would be a net increase of two thousand a year. So right now fifteen thousand a month. No, I'm sorry. I probably didn't explain it right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
They would have, they'd have an additional.
Yeah.
But approximately nineteen hundred to two thousand a year.
Yeah. Hundred ninety-six additional or some.
What was her monthly bill a buck?
It was approximately fifteen thousand five hundred. That was her estimate. She said in the fall, it's a lot lower.
Per year, per month.
Per month, I'm sorry.
Yep.
That's probably why you're confused because I.
Well, basically you could say it's one percent. I mean, we calculated one percent because that's what this is all about is one percent. Yeah. Yes.
Roughly.
Right.
And if we decided this was something that we wanted to do, I mean, there's, there was something in there about way, the way to facilitate. I think we had to have three readings and a public hearing, so.
So it's currently being taken in. What, I mean, we're having one percent taken out of our.
The average Alliant bill payer in the city of Alvernet would not see a single nickel's change in their bill. Not one nickel.
If we did one percent.
Except for the school. And that's why we bring it up because the, the school is the caveat because they are tax exempt. And so they aren't paying the lost because they received the lost. That's why we feel like it was necessary to br- bring that up. Cause they are the one entity in town that is affected by this. Everyone else in town, if we stayed at one percent, would not be affected whatsoever. And that, that is the only reason we're bringing up the school's issue is because of that.
Hell, I've got a question. Now you say that the school is accepting some loss now.
They, they don't pay lost because they receive it. You know, there are taxes.
So they are receiving lost. How much lost do they ex, receive a year?
It's this, it's, well, based on this, it's different. But if you're talking in general, it's the same kind of a situation. All that tax goes into a pool and then we get it back based on our per, our per pupil.
So but do you have any idea Josh, how much that is?
Um.
Thousands, 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 thousands.
That's not really, that's apples and oranges though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Because that's this lost money that's generated throughout the county and then divvied up. This is the lost money which is.
Just the Alliant?
Just simply Alliant.
Basically, the school would go from paying zero to paying about eighteen hundred and sixty dollars a year. Nineteen hundred bucks a year. But the city would go from getting twenty-four dollars to getting nine thousand seven years.
It would affect the school's loss in the fact that there would be less money going to the lost bucket.
But by how much?
Probably the margin would be very small.
Nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Well then.
Right.
Yeah, but then whatever their percentages that they receive, the lost.
Yeah, it's small. I mean, it's.
It's probably a tenth of a percent.
It's the same thing here. It's, it's based on our number of pupils in our school, our number of resident students in our school. So I, I couldn't tell you it's not.
Twenty-four dollars.
Yeah. For this. So I, I mean, it's a net loss, obviously.
Right. It's a bite to the budget, but an eighteen hundred or nineteen hundred dollar bite to the budget is not. In a million plus dollar budget is not a huge thing, but.
I guess two things, I won't, I won't speak for the financial piece of it. At the other, the other end, it's not their choice, what we do at this table. You know what I mean? So they'll, they'll understand.
Yep.
The, the city would benefit from this.
Yes.
Definitely.
That's nine thousand dollars we put towards.
Something.
Anything.
A lot of. I'm getting from right here thinking about it. Don't have anything, yeah.
Yeah. So how do you want to proceed? I guess if you feel like it's a good idea, we should, do you want to put it as a, as a motion item for next?
Table? Or do you want to make a motion?
A little more discussion since we're missing two members or what do you want to do?
I would like everybody here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's table.
Make it a motion or a, uh, agenda item for next, next meeting.
Because I probably.
You won't be able to.
Yeah, I say you should have been. I wouldn't want to put you in. And on a deal like that, it's gonna be too cool.
No.
I don't, do we wanna invite a member of the school now?
I don't know that it's that big a deal. I mean, it's just, it's our choice, it's you guys' choice. It's just, the courtesy would be to, to break it to them that we are gonna do this and it is gonna affect you.
Well, then we have to have the public hearing, I believe, or something where people can come in.
If anyone from the school wanted to come and question what we're doing, they could come and do it at the public hearing.
That makes sense.
Okay. And we would of course do the courtesy of letting them know, hey, we're thinking about doing this.
Yes.
I would assume that the superintendent will find out about this.
Probably.
In one way or the other.
Do you know, do you know who that is?
I bet I can find her.
Well, there we just make sure that this one is handled for next.
Okay.
Okay.
And if anybody has any questions in the meantime, or, I mean, that information's there. But I can uh, send off further questions to the guy that, from Alliant. If you have any other questions or want other information, just let me know.
The next item on the agenda is the permanent renewals.
There are three permanent renewals, two are liquor licenses and one is tobacco. Permanent renewal. They're all renewals.
If we do this all at once, do we have to do them individually?
You should have a, a motion for each one.
Yeah. Especially since they're not related.
I will make a motion to approve Fuller's Pub and Grub liquor license.
First and a second. Tim McGee, uh, approval.
All in favor?
Vote for approval.
All in.
Aye.
All in, aye.
All in, aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Lefty's convenience store liquor license.
Second.
First and second, can I hear a vote for approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, yes.
I will make a motion to approve Lefty's convenience store cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
How's it going guys?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad. I'm definitely right with the sheriff's office. You guys had thirty-one calls for service and one hundred and seven out of the forty-three required dollars for time time. So we had a personal injury accident, so sorry, we couldn't be here earlier.
Oh, no.
Local wasn't serious.
It, the person's not the you, but they seem stable, so. Any other questions?
Do you want to have any questions for the sheriff?
Just if you can pass on it, uh, I just really appreciate from the school, I've, that's what the school does. The amount of time and resource we give to the school resource officer if we need anything else. So it's very much appreciated.
I will pass that along to Kelly, so. Thank you guys much. Sorry about being late.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can I, uh, this is a little bit off topic. Can I take a second? We had a last minute request today. Uh, and I don't think it's gonna take a motion, so if you could indulge me for just a second. Um, if you remember Nancy from Fuller's Pub and Grub came in and they, she was talking about her list of dates with bike rides and stuff coming through. One of them was this uh, the Chrome Divas or Chrome whatever, Chrome for Kids that was scheduled, is on schedule. She wasn't requesting anything except maybe block off a little parking. So there was no event permit or anything. She found out just yesterday, and this is the May eighteenth event. That the Bikers Against Child Abuse Group is coming through the same day at basically exactly the same time. So she's probably gonna have a hundred and fifty bikes. So she came in today to see if it was possible to block off Main Street for an hour and detour um, around the uh, you know, just send people around because there's gonna be so many bikes. She doesn't think they would fit just in the parking areas on the street. Plus it would be chaotic with people trying to cross. Um, and I told her that I was available to bring signs and um, she would have crew on hand to put them up. And it literally would be an hour because they're just a stop on the benefit ride. It's not like they're spending time here to pull in. And the Bikers Against Child Abuse Group, um, their riders are not allowed to have any alcoholic beverage while they're on their ride. Cause it's a longer ride. This group probably would have a few beverages, but um, should be a pretty calm crowd at like eleven in the morning on a Saturday. So um, like I said, I don't think we really need a motion per se because she already had talked to us about this. But just note that we're gonna close the street instead of just close off some parking. Unless anybody has any objections or wants to talk about it.
It says right here from last week, last month. Requesting a block off parking first and block off street with barricades only if needed, so it sounds like.
So it's theirs, okay. She is, she was one, she was worried, so bless her heart for being worried about it and wanting to make sure it was okay. Yes, so. I forgot to bring that up during my report. I was going to, so I apologize for that interruption.
Any questions on that at all?
No.
Okay, we'll get on to old business. Update part-time position.
World famous, there he is, Brett Pekosh. Um, I gotta tell you about my entire scenario. We were not locating anyone um, easily, hadn't had much interest. I had one young eighteen-year-old come in, told me he could be a year-round part-time guy. He was a little worried about what he had told me. Uh, had another um, college, well, he's graduating Sunday or Saturday as a matter of fact, college graduate. That is looking for work. Um, at that point, I hadn't met Brett. I didn't know what was going on. I thought, well, maybe that's our bridge. We'll hire him for the summer. Then I got more time to find a, a all-year-round part-time. Um, and so he couldn't obviously work till after he was through with college. Meanwhile Brett came in, Brett fits all the, the criteria and we hired him. He has been working already for two and a half weeks roughly, doing a great job. And lives just north of town. He actually lives fairly close to, to John. And um, is doing fantastic. So if you haven't met him, here he is. He's, he's fitting the bill perfectly. Meanwhile, I'm in a pickle, so I just wanted to let you know about the college student. Um, I'm more or less committed to him and now I can't tell him that he doesn't, there's no work for him. My ask is if you might be willing to allow me to hire him for a short period. He's gotta be done by the end of July because he's going, moving on to a master's program that starts then. I have a enormous list of um, projects that need to be done that are labor intensive. And besides the, this being the heaviest part of the mowing season. Um, I'd like your input on whether or not I could have two guys going here for um, talk two months. There's, if you want me to read off my list, I absolutely will as far as what I've got going on. Um, I have no doubt that I can keep them both busy uh, enough for their schedules. You know, you approved hiring somebody at no more than thirty hours a week and that's what we're trying to do with Brett. And I think the college student would be happy if I get in twenty. Um, and just so he has something to do until he takes off for his master's program. But we've got a, a ton of stuff going on. Um, things like just for example, taking down that retaining wall of the shop, this leaning and getting it put back, getting it set back straight. That's gonna be a couple day project. We're working on cleaning ditches and putting culverts in on North Street next week. Um, just found out from the Sloans who rent the, the lagoons for their sheep. That we have numerous fence posts rotted off around the lagoon. So we have to do something with that or we'll lose our fence. We don't, we can't do that. That's DNR regulation, et cetera. It just keeps, there's, there's twenty more of those on my list. So uh, your thoughts and opinions?
I really don't have a problem with it, um, as long as it's, we have money for it.
Yeah.
It's not an issue.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's, it definitely would increase that, that labor budget. I, uh, all, all departments would be streets, sewer, lagoon, we'd be working on issues from all of those. Um, I really don't anticipate any, any uh, you know. Obviously, we already talked about a bunch of amendment for a pump that failed and a couple pumps that failed lift station wise and, and water wise. But there's no indication we're gonna have any major expenditures anytime soon. So each one of those departments will contribute an amount depending on what it is we're working on. Two months of twenty hours a week, uh, at fifteen dollars an hour is gonna amount to not that much money. Um, all told, the nice part is we'll get labor-intensive projects caught up uh, that have been let go. Partially because we were without a clerk for a while and that took me away from, from projects, et cetera, so.
I don't see a problem with it.
Maybe three days.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, three thousand dollars worth.
Well, you know, probably just gonna keep that youngster busy mowing.
Yeah, he can sit on the mower and do that part or, or whatever. Brett likes mowing too. It doesn't matter. He can knee down in the ditch with me digging a hole and pushing the fence post in. Yeah.
But I can hear you.
I said he can use the weed whipper.
There you go.
I, I used to know that John was allergic to the weed whipper. And it turns out Brett has a small allergy to the weed whipper too, but we'll, we'll get through it.
I used it today.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Your motion would be this?
Yeah, do we have a motion? Go ahead and hire Brett for the full time.
We need to make a motion to, he's already hired.
Yeah, he's already hired, but we probably should have a motion to approve his employment and then a motion to, to hire Nate Lux is the name of the college student, so.
I'm separately? Separately?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Brett Pekosh. As part-time uh, city maintenance.
Right.
Perfect.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'll make a motion, well, okay, hold on. Do we want to approve up to amount of hours or how do we wanna do that? Two amount of hours or through July or how do you want me to?
Yeah, one per hour for two months?
Two months worth of work. I mean, he can start.
Put an actual end date, July, whatever.
Yeah, he's, he starts classes on the first April, so I'm gonna guess he's gonna want that week before, whatever that is.
Should we just put through July thirty-one?
Yeah.
That makes sense. August, right. I'll make a motion to.
August, sorry.
Nate Lux to a part-time division in city maintenance um, to end, you know, later than July thirty-first.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Moving, Gary. Moving, Gary.
Oh, update on the Wellmark grant. We received a fourteen thousand dollar grant from Wellmark. Uh, it's already been, um, eighteen months ago. Yeah, maybe close to two years. Um, the intention was to, uh, out near the, the Wellhouse was to get the area graded down, get a, a grassy area started, uh, by a, a portable ice skating rink that could be put down in the fall, taken up in the spring. And, um, all of that kinda changed when the fire station, uh, I mean, we were headed that way, but all that kinda changed when the fire station conversation got brought up and we were able to buy the additional property from Rex because that threw the entire property into limbo as far as getting that done. Uh, Wellmark asked us regularly for updates, how are we doing on our project? And we felt it prudent to probably change our trajectory. Um, the mayor and I discussed this at length after working with the fire station and trying to figure out what we were doing for a park area to go along with this. And wondered if we couldn't, shouldn't redirect the funds into something that can be done right away so that the funds could be used, photos taken, Wellmark can say, yes, you know, our, our grant money was used in this way and the Wellmark grant had to do with fist, fitness and health. And so it has to be something along that line. So what the mayor and I kinda put together and he basically proposed was to get a walking trail started out there at the, at the fire station, uh, area. And with the intention of it possibly totally looping the entire property. Um, even to the extent, and this is a conversation, uh, counselor Henrichson to have privately, but about what width this trail is and where it starts and could possibly the city partner with property owner to make that trail start as soon as possible, possibly at Longworth Avenue to get out to this property, but that would affect the property owner that is, that is there. Um, and use that to do some dirt work, uh, use the funds to do some dirt work and possibly lay in some of the trail and get it started. And then we have, we've met the criteria of the grant, we've created a, the beginnings of a path and show Wellmark that we have a plan to extend it and once we get done with the rest of our, um, of our project. And so, um, basically we're looking for input, if you think it's a good idea or what possibly the, the mayor broke it down into phases, uh, to go along with the project. You can see at this phase, this is probably what we maybe could get done with our sixteen, fourteen or sixteen thousand, whatever it is.
Can you enlarge that so we can see what we're talking about?
Would this trail be concreted?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe similar to the Lions Trail going out to maybe go with an eight footer and that's why we're bringing, we, we need to, I mean, in theory, um, yeah, I wonder why I can't make that figure.
Oh, here we got it.
I can see it's sort of a trail.
Make your, move your mouse and then go down there.
Oh, there you go.
Your mouse is hard to use.
Yeah, that's right, click.
I'm trying, I can't.
Here.
You're on it.
No, it was, this is the mouse.
It's just me because I'm backwards with my fingers. There we go.
Do one more.
Four more.
There. See, and this is Josh's house here, and so the thought process was if he's, and this is really rough, but as a property owner on a corner lot, Josh would be required to put a sidewalk in on that side, right? But all he's required to do by ordinance is a four-foot wide sidewalk. So the thought process is if he was willing as a property owner and we're willing to kick in the, the extra funds to do it, do we start this thing out? First of all, we need to determine how wide is the right width for this? If it's gonna be a true walking trail, like I said, the tri, Lions Trail going out to the complex is eight foot wide. Part of the reasoning for that eight foot wide trail when the Lions could put that together was so that a pickup with a snow blade could go down it. So if we had snow that was easily removed, we could keep that trail open in the winter. I don't necessarily know if that's the case with this trail. So a width should be determined, but probably wider than four foot. I mean, it's hard to meet people on a four-foot wide sidewalk. You know, you can do it, but it, it really should be at least six probably to comfortably meet other people. So the thought process is do we use some of the funds to, to add to what Josh needs to do to get his sidewalk in, to make it wider? And there's nothing saying it couldn't be a six-foot sidewalk through Josh's property and then become an eight-foot trail as we moved into the city property. Um, but you just.
Down to the second, third and fourth phases?
Just.
One more guy, so.
Yep, just thinking ahead and hoping what could be, then basically you take the trail going along the entire frontage of the property, maybe even out all the way as far to the west as we can possibly go so that if Willow Street is ever completed, the sidewalk's already in place and then you take off on a spur and, and the mayor just threw in some possible scenarios for park equipment, whatever, and make that trail loop through the property so that it's a significant trail. And that's why he felt like it was good to, to show that we were planning to do more than just that, more than just a straight chunk of sidewalk going out into there a little ways that we're really thinking about making it encompass the entire area. Um, and, and whatever park facility we decide to do in that area.
This is, this is a good idea because I was just thinking, we put a fire station in, theoretically we're supposed to have a sidewalk in front of it anyway.
Yeah, right.
And on the backside too.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And so the grant technically is paying for our sidewalk.
Yes.
Have to put in anyway.
Yes.
From what my observation is, we have a lot of people in town that walk.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I see them all the time and I guess I don't know how busy the trail is south of town, but I know a lot of people walk. They, I assume this would be, they could walk their dogs too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All that, so.
Yeah.
There's a ditch right there, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a road ditch, I mean, it would, it would have to be placed appropriately and, and we'd have to think about construction phase. We probably aren't gonna wanna, unless we're willing to make an eight-inch thick sidewalk over that driveway, we probably can't pour sidewalk till we have most of the fire station construction done or we'll just wreck it, you know? But at least we can get it prepped, maybe do sections of it, et cetera. Um, but we're gonna want, if we wind up having any kind of events at that fire station, you're gonna want a good sidewalk going there too for the people that, so they don't have to find a parking spot out there, et cetera, so.
This could be on either side of that lot, it could be in the north of, um, the south side now by Roosevelt or the north side by Willow.
Yeah, the only thing we have to contend with, with Willow is Rex still, Mr. Neeler still owns all that. Once it, Willow right now stops approximately there, let's see. You know, that's where it stops now and our property line is approximately at the top of that cursor, you know, along here.
They don't quite match.
They don't quite match, so he still owns the right away. He owns that, well, wouldn't be right away, I should say, so.
Well, it seems to make perfect sense, you know, the, the sidewalk we put in here lately, you know, to go out on Roosevelt, just keep that going out along the.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and no matter how we develop, I mean, fourteen thousand dollars is only gonna go so far. And so, you know, yes, eventually there'll be playground equipment of some sort out there if that's gonna be our park and or there'll be, or maybe we do eventually buy that, that ice skating rink if, if we feel like that's still viable. But it'll be a while before we can develop that because that's, fire station needs to be done first. And so by the time we get that done, then, you know, i- i- we may have pushed Wellmark too far, is, is what I'm saying. They graciously gave us fourteen thousand dollars, we kinda need.
Fourteen thousand dollars won't go that far on a concrete sidewalk.
No, no, I, yep, I totally, totally agree. And there's gonna have to be some prep work done, it's not all laying just right. We need to know from the engineer how he's gonna change the entrance to the fire station area and if there's gonna be a second driveway possibly, which I think there could be, et cetera, before we can lay it in. But it is, we can start working on it.
This, the start of a sidewalk, sidewalk will still fall within, hopefully their parameters of fitness and health.
Yes.
If you present the rest of us.
If you, I think if we designate it as a walking trail, that's gonna create, make the, the designation. And I also think that's gonna create the need to take it wider than a normal sidewalk too.
So you're just a normal sidewalk, you have to take in about fourteen hundred feet.
Yeah, right, right.
And if you went to a wider one, you're gonna cut that back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um, that's just, we're, we're trying to use that grant money to the best of our ability given our current situation as it has changed since we actually got the grant is, is the whole reason for this.
And I reached out to them and they are willing to allow us to modify the plan.
That's what I was gonna ask.
But they want us to do it soon and they want us to be in contact with them and let them know what we're gonna, what we would like to change to get their blessing on that.
So in a sense the property owner would be responsible for a four-foot sidewalk and then if, if that went to eight, that's the city or the grant would take care of that.
They, yeah, wi- with council approval, obviously, they, they would, yes, um, use some of that grant money to make that an eight footer. Or maybe it makes more sense going through a residential lawn to be six foot. I mean, you're coming off of a four-foot ramp anyway, maybe you go six foot through and then that would allow us to go a little farther out? You know, and then widen it to eight as soon as we hit city property.
Or go five foot through property owners because five foot's ADA way.
That's true, yeah, yeah. I mean, everybody walking on sidewalk to get to that point is gonna be on a four-foot sidewalk anyway. So maybe just going five foot to accommodate more ADA type scenario is enough. The, and so then the city with council approval pay for that extra foot of concrete. We'll probably get a per square foot bid from somebody to do it and so then it's easy to add on the extra square footage and done deal. Um, we could also ask Osmonds who live just north of Josh there if they would be interested in, in extending their sidewalk just in anticipation of someday, you know, because your local average hood, neighborhood kid is gonna run down that sidewalk and not even miss a beat when he steps off the sidewalk onto the grass and heads maybe to the back side of the property. So just in, or, or at least ask him to think about it, you know, so.
Does anybody have an idea how much, say you did five feet, eight feet, how much sidewalk you couldn't afford with that kind of price?
I didn't take the time, we just discussed this, I didn't have time enough. Uh, we had numbers, it seems to me it was, when we were doing sidewalk on, on Moodheart though, wasn't it three dollars a running foot of four-foot sidewalk, three, three?
Three something does sound right.
I don't remember now, or maybe it was square foot, three something a square foot on a four, I can't remember. I just, I wouldn't wanna say without looking it up. I don't know if I could get that. So. I was trying to remember what the total cost of the, of the Lions Trail was when we got all done too.
Isn't that thirty-something?
I think it was thirty, but that's a lot of eight foot, a lot of feet worth of eight foot sidewalk.
It could go a long ways for fourteen thousand, I mean, I knew that prep work to do a four's good.
Yeah.
And really if you're paying for four foot, it's not eight foot.
Well, and the other thing you have to remember too, once we have a designated driveway area, we don't need to put the trail in that area. We just need to ask our city contractor, whoever gets the bid for the fire station to, if, if it's not flat enough already, which it probably will be, to make sure there is that eight, matching ADA slope requirement through the driveway because we are putting walking trail through here, so when they pour the driveway, then.
Which they should all know that.
Yeah, exactly.
One and a half, two percent.
Yeah, so when you're, when you're figuring the length you can go, you can take out if it's gonna be a thirty-foot driveway or forty-foot driveway, whatever it is, we're not gonna have to pay for that out of these funds. We're gonna pay for it out of other funds, but we won't have to pay for it out of these funds. Who knows, we could get, if we put in a second driveway, we could wind up all the way over at the Wellhouse with an eight foot.
Do you know approximate distance from the Wellhouse up to, to the end of the city property?
No, I don't, not off the top of my head. Um.
Uh, I'd say the Wellhouse property is probably a hundred and twelve, wide.
I mean, then you get, or black to black.
I don't know if there's a scale on that, what's the scale?
Along Roosevelt.
Yeah.
I didn't look up the session.
Do the GIS, do you have a tool? Use that tool.
The GIS tool?
Yeah.
It's amazing. Yeah, you know.
Is this, I think the idea of making the amendment and being in contact with Wellmark is a smart thing. Um, there's a few questions that we probably should look into a little more before we make a final decision.
So make this, basically make this an agenda item for next month and have all of our.
Ducks in a row.
Footages, ducks in a row, some rough estimates as far as cost goes and.
You know, what you're saying is if, if that three dollars are for a four-foot sidewalk and Mike Allen thinks you're right, you can get a couple thousand feet out of it.
Yeah, I, I mean.
You know, if it, you can get a thousand or fifteen hundred feet, that's quite a bit out there.
Yeah, if it's good going, I mean.
It is, you know.
I wish I could've got that good a deal when I did my sidewalk.
Probably more than either, cheap green.
Well, that's just it, you know, if you start telling them it's, it is a couple thousand feet long, they, it gets better in a hurry. Okay. So this is the actual total west edge.
So what's, what's the dimension of the block line there?
Two seventy. And one ninety-nine.
Yeah, we need to have pressure.
So just to the, from end to end, what is that?
About four seventy feet?
Five forty-two.
Five forty-two point five.
Okay.
Thanks, Russ.
But you consider there's probably gonna be a driveway, um, somewhat of that width here and some of the talk lately in designing the fire, you know, you've got, you take this piece out of it and then there may be, these are the double culverts, we can't do any driveways west of there, but it might not be a bad idea to put in another driveway of similar width here because it's easily done, there's not that much water flows down here, so a simple culvert will handle it. So then you've got two driveways that could each be forty feet wide.
Yeah, you could have eighty or a hundred foot driveway.
You could have eighty, eighty or a hundred foot that's out of that number as well, so. Yeah, a lot of possibilities. Alright, so in other words, I need to sharpen my pencil and get some numbers and get some, et cetera, okay? Okay. Uh, that's all I've got on that particular item. If anybody else has any more questions.
Are we ready to move on to the next item?
I think so.
Okay, fire station.
Eyes are bugging out, what in heck is it?
Do you have to do that?
No, I don't, I guess I don't, I have a paper.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I didn't get that uploaded, that's my fault. Um, we got a, like a little preliminary, um, sketch-up that the architect had worked on.
Pretty hard, pretty hard to see on your phone.
What?
Pretty hard to read that sketch when you're coming in.
Is it in your email?
I get, it's here. Uh, no, that's not it. No, it's not in my email, I don't think. Yes, it would be.
It should be.
Yeah, that's right, it's, it's a basic, um, just kinda what he's thinking. So Steve, you have seen it, I was asking if you, I wondered if you had checked your email and seen it. Um, there was some talk about orientation, whether the building would go the long way north and south or the long way east and west. Um. I may have put that in my fire station folder already. I may have put that in my fire station folder already. And, um, and then some interior layout. I think that's it. Yeah.
Yesterday.
So.
No, it's just a.
I went to the fire station group. So this is kind of with a, the long way going east and west orientation, kinda like I think everyone originally, talked about it. The, a couple of things that hadn't been discussed before, you discussed kinda doing a little bit of a bump out for this radio room, just to give the building a little more character, uh, with very little additional cost. We had talked at length about how to handle restrooms in a dr- in, in proximity to the training room, considering you could possibly rent that room out at times. And so it appears to me, we didn't get to have much discussion, but a little corridor here where you could reach the restrooms from the training room and obviously kitchen here, et cetera.
And still block off.
And still block off, keep everybody out of that apparatus bay. Obviously, there's stairs set up here for storage above that area. And the only thing I don't know, I didn't get to ask him, was if they were planning on making everything above the entire training, all of this storage or not? Or if it was just over these, I mean. But I don't know if he's planning on that or not, but what I'm saying is he's obviously got stair access built to go. Air room would be where the cascade system goes. Danielle questioned if that should be buried behind the laundry room, but it is a single purpose room with only one purpose in mind, there'll be nothing going on in that air room except filling your, your S C B A tanks, right? So I can totally understand it being buried back there. And then the laundry, we talked about a decontamination room or a place to put stuff that might have chemicals and whatever, that would be there. Um, and I'm assuming, he just says toilet, but we also talked about having a area where you guys could shower. So I'm gonna guess, since he's got three rooms marked toilet, this one that faces the apparatus bay probably is where he would put a shower in. Oh, they.
Or a, a family.
Yes, family.
In some of the other plans we've had, the configuration was different here, but this is built with the option that it could potentially be bumped out to the west sometime in the past.
Exactly.
And the orientation, they've decided it has to go this way rather than north and south.
Yeah, just, if, if you turn it and run the long way north and south, you're gonna immediately run out of room to add on, should you ever want to add on.
I think even in the winter time, you don't want your doors to face west.
Yeah, not.
You know, I think east, west, east, west.
Well, and there was even some discussion about the fact that when you think of a fire station, you wanna see those doors your, your trucks are coming out of, you don't wanna see the end of the building. You, you wanna see the doors, you know.
That's, you're right, that's gotta be that way.
Yeah, I think so too, I, but we, the reason we discussed the other orientation was a lot to, for aesthetics, basically, for, you know, what end of the building are you, are you projecting to the neighbors? And, and where are you gonna put partying and et cetera, so.
I'll speak for the neighbors and I'd rather see it be east, west, be, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, east, west, long ways, yeah.
Otherwise, all I'm gonna ever see is trucks backing out.
Yeah.
This is gonna block your view.
Personally, I would rather have it be west, the way they need to orient it.
Yeah.
If I'm, if I'm able to give that opinion.
Well, I think it came up at their meeting with, some of their department, they wanted this way and ended up working better if they turned it, and that was just a suggestion.
Well, and, and I think it appears to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, Steve, but they basically have incorporated everything you asked for. I mean, you've got this, the radio room where business is taken care of, office for the chief. The EMS storage was a big item that got brought up at the meeting to have, keep that kind of stuff separate from the rest of, you know, the storage area we talked about. And he's, this is not done by anyone, see, this is just his, his rough up. But the, the firemen talked about having their gear and things on rolling racks, so you're not gonna see like gear storage labeled in this buil- building. It'll be on rolling racks to be able to, you know, if they need to push it out of the way cause they're having an event in the Bay Area or a training in the Bay Area, they push it out of the way. During, under normal circumstances, you'll roll them up right to the back of the truck, so when they go in for a call, their gear is right there, um, et cetera, so. And there's a lot of stuff he hasn't gone into detail on, like fill station for the fill in the trucks with water and, you know, and all that kinda stuff, but. It appears to me to be a decent sized training room for what you guys need. You'll have, should have all the storage you need. We talked about keeping the kitchen, like a catering kitchen, keeping it.
Down there's, there's five doors, right?
Yep, five bays.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the four trucks that we have now would probably be, the one thirty-nine, the, the rescue truck would be here and, and then increase in size as you go this way. And the fire department's hope is that in the not-too-distant future, they could have like a Suburban or Expedition for, for their medical, uh, vehicle. And that would obviously go right there next to that EMS storage, um, when they go respond to a medical only call, so. That.
It's a good start.
Yeah, I think we're on our way to having a fire station design that could actually be put out there and, and shown around and maybe some good fundraising on top of what we've already done, get going.
When do you think we'll be ready to have a meeting with township people?
I bet it's gonna take another month by the time we get to a design and talk to the.
I think it oughta be pretty solid.
Yeah, 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 I, at least another month before we have a design that you guys are happy with and the architect's happy with.
I'm not pushing, I'm just bringing.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Take your time and do it right.
Yep.
Cause now's the time to decide. It's gonna be a lot easier to do it right the first time than to do it over.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I can't imagine, in fact, I think he had kind of a thirty-day window to work on this, didn't he, Steve? And so it's probably in the next few days, he's gonna have to present us what he feels like is, yeah, is the, is his initial, I mean, if we tell him to go back and change it, he'll have to.
Yeah, I think he maybe gave two options or something, but after we adopt something, it gets expensive to start making changes.
That's the reason.
I mean, even in the, the planning, see, cause the architects will start charging them an additional fee after we get the first couple of mockups.
Yeah, that's usually, that's what's.
Design your house and then build it.
And that door, essentially, if you had a vehicle parked in that first bay, would that allow for quite a bit of room?
Yeah, yeah.
You wouldn't enter.
Cause those doors.
Now, where you walk in the door and there's a truck right in your face?
No, those doors are probably twelve, at, at least twelve wide, maybe fourteen.
They were suggesting going wider.
Is wide, fourteen's if possible, and if, and if he did use fourteen-foot doors, you gotta consider vehicles only about seven to seven and a half feet wide. The, like, if it's a Suburban, it's probably only six and a half feet wide. So yes, Danielle was worried about, are you gonna walk, open the door from that entry hallway and be boom, right into a vehicle? No, it, it, it appears that way, but those doors are wide. Oh, there'll be plenty of walking, yeah.
Cause right now, when you walk in the door.
Well, and until they get that medical response vehicle, there probably won't even be anything parked in that first stall. Really, you'll, you'll probably use the far forestalls for everything, so.
Were they gonna put a drive-through bay or is that in the future?
Well.
That should be designed in here.
It's, well, what he's gonna do is, uh, what he told us that day is he's going to do the roughing. So e- even if we don't put a single drive-through for now, he's gonna have the framework built so that it's just a matter of cutting the tin out and putting the door in. So that, so that we're not doing structural changes to put drive-through doors in, so.
Is there gonna be one or two of those designed?
If he, at least two, and we could do them one at a time, if that's what.
They were trying to do the outside two, wasn't that it?
But you know, a driveway behind it, there's no reason.
I'd say if it's there, in the future.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Ready to move on to the next one now? Updated nuisance amendments.
Uh, letters were sent out on the thirtieth of April. Um, the deadline to request a hearing is tomorrow. We've had four requests for a hearing. So we need to plan a time to have that. One of the property owners who did not request a hearing, um, but did come and speak with us, mentioned that he works second shift and the only time he would be available for a hearing would be during the day. Time hours, um, he requested between nine and two.
But he has requested a time?
He did not put a formal request in for a hearing, but he did say that if, if he won't, if he was gonna request a hearing, it would be during the day, or he would have to have it during the day, so.
He works seven days a week.
That I do not know.
To, to that note, we had the city attorney out today to view some of the properties just so he knew in case anything escalated, he, he got more than just a picture, that he got some background and he got some, et cetera. And, and we discussed at length that some of the best approach that we could have with certain of these properties is just for probably myself to meet with them, to knock on the door and say, we're not trying to pick on you, you know, what can we do to move this through? Here's what we're after, and he would definitely be one of those. I would probably go to his residence and say, look, you know, you all are in the same boat. There's worse problems, there's, there's not-so-bad problems. We're just trying to get things cleaned up and get to a solution and, and approach a lot of these properties in that manner, rather than going, um, guns blazing, so to speak. And, but yet we have to be firm, and so that then leads to the question. Danielle's been very thorough about researching our ordinance versus what's going on. And also the attorney looked at everything, and the attorney was absolutely okay with every letter we sent out, hands down. The thing that we need to be thinking about, especially as we come to these hearings, if we've got people who absolutely decline to do anything and/or don't even try and make comment, we have two choices, we can go ahead and abate, which means we can, with one more notice, move on to the property, remove the nuisance, bill them for it, and assess it to their taxes if need be, which is pretty aggressive. Or we have the option of a municipal infraction, which by state codes means we can basically just fine them between, at our discretion, between seven hundred and fifty or a thousand dollars a day until they get it cleaned up themselves. So both options have obviously tremendous weight behind them. You as a council needs to consider those things when we get to, if, when and if we get to that point, um, which route you might wanna take. And we can get you more information on, on both. But actually going and seizing people's property is, is a little more sticky than applying a fine, obviously. And for the majority of the, the people who got a letter, if, if I can work through the situation with them, obviously that's the best advantage for all of us. And as long as, as they make an attempt to comply, then we're in pretty good shape, so.
The attorney wanted to know what the councils, um, how the council wanted to proceed, what you guys are looking to see done. Do you wanna, um, proceed in legal action with any of these? Or do you wanna, the, he suggests that we do one property at a time. Um, there are two property owners who we have, um, legal proceedings with in this file right here.
From years past, it's been the same.
Experiences, and there, um, are some settlements that were signed by the property owners stating that they wouldn't violate these, um, ordinances again.
So we have addition, that's additional weight.
I think that's be a good, that is an excellent place to start. The other question I have, and I don't know the answer to, I should know the answer before I ask the question, but I don't. These people that are wanting to have a hearing, would we be better off to go there and look at the situation? Or just do it here?
I think do it here, I mean, we can provide you with all the photos that you need if you need to get an idea and, and background too, because probably before we set these hearings up, I probably will have visited with them personally, and so I'll probably have a little background. And we have several people that have already either abated themselves and/or have let us know that they have a plan to, you know. So we're gonna boil down, I feel like, to two or three properties that could be an issue. We are, we also have people that have made no contact, they have refused to accept their certified letter, they have made no contact with us whatsoever. And, you know, that's a situation where it might just take that face-to-face, knock on the door, hey, I'm sure you've noticed that you were, you know, you have a certified letter, here's what it's about, this is all we're after, you know, and go from there. A- as far as a hearing goes, the majority of the people that have asked for a hearing so far are, they're just gonna ask you for more time, is all it is, they're, they're not denying that they have a problem.
But they have a right, and they have
Yep.
taken advantage of their right to request a hearing, so we need to facilitate that.
I think if we tackle these two tough nuts first, people are gonna realize that we're serious.
Yeah.
And I think it'll hold on easier.
Well, and that's what the attorney mentioned too, is if, you know, and I said, if you, word travels fast in town this size, so. If, if, you know, if one problematic situation is, is cleaned up, word will travel, so.
I think mediations are best bet, as you said, for the most part. If that doesn't work, then obviously there's other things that have to happen, but, you know, but most situations mediation's always gonna be our best bet. If you have a couple that are clearly not going to go down the road, then I guess we have to make decisions then, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and making contact with the people who have not made contact with us and just finding out if they know, you know, do, do they know? Do they, you know, unfortunately, I'm afraid some of these people are, are too used to getting certified letters and it's bad news, so they just try and ignore them, so do they know what it's about? Do, do they even know? You know, that's, that's what we need to do is, is on those. The post office will return those to us after so many days, so we'll know who hasn't picked up their certified letter here eventually.
But we can track them too.
And we can track them too, and so it's just gonna take knocking on a few doors, and I might have to go out in a couple of evenings to catch people at home, but, um, not the end of the world.
There's, uh, been some questions from some of the property owners on putting up a, uh, like a temporary garage or.
It's kinda like a portable, like the canvas cupboard type, you know, type structures.
Tried to look through ordinances to see if I could find anything specific, and there's like a detached accessory building structure. And there's just some requirements on it, but I couldn't find anything specific.
And there's a few of them in town already, and a few of the people that we're dealing with have them, and I, I, I guess our ordinance is not clear enough on that. We can't change it quick enough for our immediate situation, but, um, we might wanna be more specific on that in the near future.
Well, they're, they're gonna ask you guys about that, so I think it would be good for us to look at the ordinances and see what the interpretation is, so when you are asked if they're allowed to have that, what are.
You might wanna get ahold of whatever that group and see what other towns have done, what are.
Oh, P C C O G?
Ordnances that they have, so we've got a, some kinda guideline to go by.
Yeah, and, um. There's a nuisance abatement conference next week that the mayor and councilman Sarah and I are attending, so hopefully we can get some other clarification there as well.
So we really are kinda just in the crux of it, and that's the intention that we have, is to try and reach out and talk to people, make sure they understand why they got the letter and how easy, truly easy it could be to fix. make sure they understand why they got the letter, and how easy, truly easy it could be to fix some of their situations.
So, so you'll be contacting some of these people that have been problem in the house since you before we
Well, yeah. We're in fairly close contact with a couple, with at least the, probably the biggest issue in town, and, and we've talked to him a couple times lately, and we don't know how it's gonna, how the reaction's gonna be, and he has requested a hearing, um, and he has indicated it's just to, to have more time because of the sheer volume that he has to move, which is understandable, but it has to be, has to be reasonable.
Be a solid timeline, and we gotta see action.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Are you, so are you asking us for a, a date at this point, or do you just need to set a hearing and you'll give us dates, or how do you wanna do that?
No, cause we need to get through tomorrow, when the, the last day that you can, so we know how many we're dealing with, so.
Then at that point, you'll set a date?
Yeah, well, yeah, we need to try to set a date, so just be thinking if you.
I would suggest, I mean, if May twenty-eighth is already gonna be very quick.
Oh.
Maybe that's a date that we can consider, obviously after tomorrow.
Councilmen, they'll probably, they won't be that.
The possibility is there.
I just thought that we're already.
That's actually quite a good idea, if we're gonna meet anyway, then maybe we can knock some out.
Save the taxpayers a little bit of our wage.
Okay, cool.
Do you guys have any other questions?
I have the questions on that. Just move on to the next item, and this, the Taylor store extension comfort.
The shortest one, no, no action, uh, weather's been too crappy to do anything, um, only thing that came up recently was um, easement, um, I thought that MSA had it all prepped up for us, and they didn't, so we're waiting for that. MSA got it done, it's at the attorney, uh, this is for Rex to sign for doing the, uh, drainage through the field. Rex is on board, I've talked with him, I just gotta get the paperwork in my hand to take it to him to have him sign, so. And that's the last piece of the puzzle, and we just wait for Jeremy to.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to thank everybody for their cooperation, I needed all the help I could get. All those in favor?
Aye.
Guess we're done.